They want to sit in the back row so they can leave.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As many of you know, the last couple of weeks, we've had a very lively debate in the chamber. And I found that it was very interesting that there was a lot of Bible verses being beside it. And I found this saying, or it's a quote from Abraham Lincoln, this is probably his second inaugural address. And he's speaking of the north and the south. And I'll read this quote to you. "Both read from the same Bible and pray to the same God, and each invokes his aid against the other." I'd also like to just mention that the Omaha Fire Chief, Mike McDonald, his father passed away, Bill McDonald, who was a longtime city employee and firefighter. And I think we should remember him. Amen.
City Clerk, certified publication on daily record, on March 16th, notice for a peer council and regular city council meeting, March 20th, 2012. A current copy of Meetings Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Welcome and good afternoon. This Omaha City Council meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage a debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. Mr. Clerk.
Our first item is the International Visitors Leadership Program. We have a group from Venezuela here, and we have one of their spokespersons that he would like to say a couple of words. And you can have them speak right up there before the mics. Yeah, please identify yourself.
Thank you very much. My name is Aldo DeSantis. I'm from Venezuela, Caracas. I'm with the International Leadership Visitor Program, sponsored by the Secretary of State. It is a really great honor to be here in front of you and this Omaha City who has appointed us as honorary members. So we are really glad. I'm sorry about my English is a little bit rough, so I'm sorry. And I would like to say that this experience of being here in the United States has been wonderful. We have been in DC, also Manchester, New Orleans, now here in Omaha, and we will finish our journey, our travel, in Los Angeles, LA. I have to say that we have been truly in love of this city of Omaha. All the people have been really nice with us. And we hope to learn about your procedures of the council, how it works, how it manages. And we would like to thank you very much for this time. Thank you very much.
And we would like to thank you for being here as well. It's a real honor that you get to come to Omaha, Nebraska. Unfortunately, from Omaha, you said you're going to go to Los Angeles, so really soak this weather up here because you'll enjoy it a lot more than Los Angeles.
Would all of our visitors please stand?
Welcome and thank you for coming to Omaha. I'd also like to mention, and this is for the entire crowd here today, our friends from Venezuela have an interpreter. And so they're all wired up with microphones. So you might hear a little bit of noise coming from the back row. They're not being discourteous, but they're just, their interpreter is making sure that everybody is, has the opportunity to understand what's going on with the meeting. So with that, Mr. Clerk.
Zoning ordinance on final regen planning board attachments, item number six, ordinance to rezone property located at 181315 Clark Street, 153337, 4345, 4751, 5359, and 63 Florence Boulevard from R7 to R5 Urban Family Residential District, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on agenda item number six begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Stothard, Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed, six to zero. We'll take items seven through 11. It's all one case. Seven is ordinance to rezone property located southeast of 22nd and O Streets from R7 to DR Development and Reserve District, eight to rezone to R7, medium family residential district, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Nine is resolution preliminary plat entitled First Addition to South Omaha Replat One is hereby accepted. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Ten is resolution that the replat transmitted here with entitled First Addition to South Omaha Replat One is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And eleven is special use permit application to allow outdoor sports and recreation in a DR Development and Reserve District is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items number seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Scott Die, 1500 Woodman Tower, attorney for Omaha Public Schools. I'm just here to answer any questions anybody might have about these items.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. Die, if you would. I'd just like to give you an opportunity to talk a little bit more about this, if you would. This is a home run, and Councilor Gurnat feels that way too. But this is kind of a big deal in terms of what OPS is doing with its athletic fields. And this seems like a routine item for approval here. But I wanted to give you a chance to just talk about what this means.
Thank you. This is a field that the South Omaha Boys and Girls Club had. And they're conveying it to Omaha Public Schools. And we're going to construct a softball field with dugouts and new bleachers and backstop, et cetera, and add parking to the area, too, some angled parking, which will improve the parking situation. We have a reciprocal use facilities agreement with the Omaha Boys and Girls Club, both for their north and south Omaha facilities and Blackburn, which is adjacent to their north facility, as well as this field, so that they have priority to use our facilities. We're not using them. We have priority to use their facilities, and they're not using them. So it's been a very beneficial relationship. Dave Van Meter has been one of the prime movers in raising his funds for this, as he has for many other projects that OPS has had in improving athletic fields.
Great. Sounds like a great partnership. And I appreciate your work on it. And certainly OPS, citywide, is making great progress in other athletic fields. And this is another great example.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
We need a motion.
No, the public hearing is closed.
We have a motion. Okay, we have a motion. Second.
We have a motion. Roll call.
Festerson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Stothard, Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed, seven, or six to zero. Item number 12, ordinance to rezone property located at 2614, 2620, and 24Y Street from HI to R4 Single Family Residential District, High Density, A Planning Board, Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 12 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Stothard, Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed, six to zero. Item number 13, ordinance to rezone property located at 808 South 74th Plaza and 27 South 75th Street from GI, from GC and GI to GO General Office District, portions of which property lie within the flood fringe. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 13 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, simply here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Stothard, Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed, seven to zero. Items 14 through 18 are one case. 14 is ordinance to rezone property located southeast of 78th and Dodge Street from GI to CC Community Commercial District. 15 is to rezone to GI General Industrial District. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. 16 is the preliminary plat of Lowe's of Omaha Replat One is hereby accepted. 17 is resolution that the replat transmitted here with entitled Lowe's of Omaha Replat One is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. 18 is subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
The public hearing on agenda items number 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Brad Blakeman, Blakeman Engineering, 10423 Hanson Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here on behalf of Lowe's Home Centers Incorporated. I'm here with Charles Sturdeman from Lowe's. He flew in from North Carolina to address any questions you may have. We're here to request approval for the preliminary and final plat of Lowe's of Omaha Replat One, lots one and two, the rezoning of those lots, and the subdivision agreement between Cutchell Management and the city of Omaha. Will answer any questions. Basically, what we're doing here is, there's a lot at the corner of 76th and Dodge that has been vacant since 2000, when I first plowed this property. And Lowe's has been trying to make it marketable. And it's been very unmarketable because of lack of access, the new zoning buffers. There's a driveway. There's a large billboard on the property. So our intent here is to basically take the driveway easement, the billboards, and take those and add those into Lowe's current lot on Lot One. And we're going to make Lot Two, basically move it farther south so that we can have access. And the access will be through Lowe's parking lot because city's traffic won't allow us to come off Dodge Street either. So if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Just one question, if you have a second. This isn't my district, and I'm familiar with the site. In fact, I go there pretty frequently. And I understand the need to move things around a little bit there to make it workable. This is for a restaurant, right?
This is, Greg Cutchell's actually had a vision to build a restaurant here because he feels it's a very viable lot. However, there's a sewer, there's a city sewer that runs right through the middle lot also, that when we built Lowe's, obviously your district, you know that, well, let me show you the picture. Basically, this is the Lowe's building. And this is our vacant, our existing lot there at 76th. The only way in is through here. There's a sewer that runs right through, that used to run right through the center of the site. When Lowe's came along in 2000, we rerouted that sewer around the building. So now, for the most part, we're just going to extend this lot south. There's a driveway right here that goes between Midas and this vacant lot. And we're basically moving this lot line down into the parking lot of Lowe's and taking away about 20 spots.
Okay.
And they have about 125 extra spots already, even taking away these 30. So parking's not an issue at all. But that's the intent for to build a restaurant.
And are you liberty to say what the restaurant will be? Or is that, I don't want to put you in the spot if you're not ready to say that, but...
I thought Greg was going to be here, but he's looking to build a Sonic Restaurant at that location.
Okay. Thank you. Motion approved.
Roll call.
Festerson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Stothard, Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed, seven to zero. Item number 19, or six to zero. Item number 19, ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District to incorporate that district property located at 9905 Q Street. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And we have some requests as B from the developer.
Public hearing on agenda item number 19 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Wally Pelz, Pelz Engineering, 2323 Dixon Street, Des Moines, Iowa, 50316. I'm here representing Casey's General Stores. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have on our rezone proposal.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Stothard, Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed, six to zero. Item number 20 and 21 go together. 20 is ordinance to approve an amendment to the land use element of the master plan to change the future land designation from low-density residential to office commercial property located southeast of 132nd and West Dodge Road. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And 21 is resolution preliminary plat entitled Anderson Acres Replat Four located southeast of 132nd and West Dodge Road is hereby accepted. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items number 20 and 21 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant and Lexus of Omaha. The two items that are before you today are, number one, the amendment to the master plan, or the future land use element of the master plan. And then the second item is a preliminary plat. With the two action items today, we will be able to go back to the planning board with respect to the actual rezoning that you'll see later with the planned unit development on top, overlay on top, as well as an ACI four, I believe, on this particular site as well. So this is just kind of the preliminary approvals to end up redeveloping that entire corner on 132nd and Dodge for the new Lexus dealership.
Thank you, Mr. Jovan.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Stothard, Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed, six to zero. Items 22 through 24 are one case. 22 is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District to incorporate in that district property located southeast of 144th and Q Streets. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. 23 is resolution that the plat entitled Come and Go at 144th and Q is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And 24 is a resolution subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items number 22, 23, and 24 begin now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Stothard, Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda item number 25 should be laid over two weeks for publication, public hearing. Special use permit, item number 26, resolution special use permit application to allow convenient storage in a community commercial district located northeast of 60th Street and Hartman Avenue is hereby accepted. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 26 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Hi, my name is Joe Cozy. I own Cozy Lawn and Storage at 5701 North 60th. If anybody has any questions, I'm here.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Stothard, Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, six to zero. Item number 27, resolution special use permit application to allow convenient storage in a community commercial district located at 20120 Veterans Drive is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 27 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Steve Perry, Olmsted and Perry Consulting Engineers, 1073 Old Pacific, on behalf of Lean Land LLC, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Stothard, Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, six to zero. Liquor, item number 28, Alter Ego Lounge, 15240 and 15244 West Maple Road, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Hello, Mr. President and members of the council.
Just one second. Public hearing on agenda item number 28 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Sherry Swift, appearing on behalf of Alter Ego Ultra Lounge, located at 15240 and 15244 West Maple Road, to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothard.
Sherry, could you come back? Can I repeat your name?
Sherry Swift.
Ronald is your husband?
Ronnie is my husband.
Okay. And he's got a criminal history, but he has already signed a paper saying that he will not be involved and participate in any way, shape, or form. Can you guarantee us that?
That is correct. I will absolutely guarantee you that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I need.
Good luck with your new operation. Roll call.
Festerson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Stothard, Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, six to zero. Item number 29, Block 16 at 1611 Farnor Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 29 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Hi, my name is Paul Urban. I am a co-owner and co-proprietor of Charles Cabin Incorporated. I'm here for, to answer any questions you guys might have. Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Mr. Urban, I just want to make sure that you're absolutely confident, your business partner, Jessica.
Absolutely.
You're sure you want to do this?
100%. Yes, sir.
All right. Well, I wish you the best of luck at your new place.
Thank you so much.
We'll try to get over there.
All right. Thank you. Roll call.
Festerson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Stothard, Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, six to zero. Item number 30, Sam and Louis's New York Pizzeria, 2418 Coming Street, Class I liquor license, new application, oh, location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 30 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Tamara Nun, on behalf of Sam and Louis's 2418 Coming Street, answer any questions?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothard.
Thank you. Is Nicholas here today?
Yes.
Hi. Will I say your name and address?
Nick Nun, 9306B Miss Plaza, Omaha, Nebraska.
Okay. I just want to ask you, you have a couple of criminal offenses here. Is the first one, was that an MIP?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so that was obviously a long time ago.
Yeah.
And then you had another DUI? Are you had a DUI also?
One DUI, yeah.
Okay. And you're the manager?
Yes. That's correct.
Okay. And being the manager, you're there to make sure we follow the rules and regulations of the law?
At all times.
So you've had a little problem with the law yourself in the past. So how can you tell us that you will be a responsible manager of this business?
Since then, I have taken a TIPS certification course pertaining to alcohol service and operations. And following the approval of liquor license, plan on re-certification for myself, my brother, who's also managing, and my front-house staff.
Is your brother Robert?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. And what is your experience at being a manager, a liquor manager?
I've managed two other locations, restaurants in Omaha, dealing with, from wine to liquor to just beer.
Okay. And what measures will you have in place to prevent sale to minors?
Constant checking of IDs, identification, in only accepted forms of identification.
Can I chime in on that?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Well, I was mainly wanted to ask him.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Move to approve?
Roll call.
Festerson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Stothard, Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, six to zero. Item number 31, Anchor Inn, 2499 Freedom Park Road, request permission to change location of the present Class C liquor license to 5413 South 72nd Street, Suite 101.
Public hearing on agenda item number 31 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Jeff Ryban, 6035 South 36th Street, for the Port Corporation.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon, John Porter, 607 Dearborn Circle, Papillion, Nebraska, 68046. I'm appearing as a proponent for the record. I am a proponent and support the continuance of the license for the Port Corporation. However, I am an opponent on the hardship inflicted by various city officials and their opinions, interpretations, and views toward a private sector business, namely the Anchor Inn. Jeff Ryban provides a unique type of leisure time activities to residents of our city and surrounding communities. His business provides jobs while creation, by creating a tax revenue stream for the city through his restaurant, lounge, and music venue. Our city, through its leaders, has inhibited his ability to continue this social interaction where people of all walks of life can return to the River River and relax. The anchor on the Missouri River is an icon. Hazard Inc., yes, sir.
This is for the liquor application?
Yes, I know. This all goes with this, sir. So if I could continue this for the record.
All right. It doesn't, what you're giving us here, the information you're giving us here, doesn't seem pertinent to the liquor license application.
The relevance is that Mr. Ryban operated a business along the banks of Missouri, Anchor Inn. His business suffered from the flood of 2011. He leases that property from us. We've been unable to present our case by various certified engineers to the various boards with the city of Omaha. In kind, Mr. Ryban, to continue his liquor license, had to apply for a change of location. His change of location is moving from the river to the place in Mr. Gurnat's area. The history of why he's moving is why I'm here today to present that.
I understand that. But we're talking about his liquor license application today. You stated that you were a proponent, speaking in favor of him getting, receiving a liquor license at this new location.
Correct.
So I think we have, we have got your thoughts and ideas. And unless you have any other further comments with regard to that, I'll have to ask you to leave the podium.
Okay. Again, sir, I respect your consideration on this. Being a former elected official, I understand your position. All the facts that I would be presenting is relevant to this. It relates back to Mr. Ryban's, his location, his place, his change. And I respect your decision on that. Hopefully, the corporation will be allowed to make its presence known and address the various allegations presented by the various members of government here. But in kind, we would support the change of location for Mr. Ryban. And hopefully, that in the future, Mr. Ryban will be allowed to return to his business operation along the Missouri River. So thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Jay Ryban, 4505 Bernadette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68157. And I'd just like to say that the anchor and Jeff Ryban have always operated a top-notch venue with well-staffed and always under well organization and good security. And we hope the best for him at his new location.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any... Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray. Jaram. Stothard. Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved six to zero. Item number 32, Longhorn Steakhouse, at 7425 Dodge Street, request permission to appoint Paul Rose, Roses manager.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 32 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, hello, I'm Paul Roses, managing partner with Longhorn Steakhouse, 7425 Dodge Street, Suite 103. Just here to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray. Jaram. Stothard. Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved six to zero. Item number 33, Bill's Convenience Store, 3928 Maple Street, request permission to appoint a new manager.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 33 begins now. Are there any proponents?
My name is Waitom, the manager of the corporation, manager, and we are appointed as a manager.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jaram. Stothard. Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved on a 5-1 vote. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause an I place on the consent agenda to be removed. Item is removed, consent agenda shall be taken up by City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, as otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearings on agenda items number 34 through 40 were held on March the 13th, 2012. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jaram. Stothard. Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all passed seven to zero. Or six to zero. I want to give you some.
The public hearings on agenda items number 41 through 62 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jaram. Stothard. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 41 through 62 are adopted six to zero. Ordinance on final reading, item 63, ordinance to amend sections 18, 65, 66, 67, 68, and adopt a new section 18 day 68 dash 1 to modify requirements and procedures for the removal of graffiti, A is an amendment of the whole.
The public hearing on agenda item number 63 continues today. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Heather Tippy Pierce, Public Works. I am a proponent of the ordinance, and just wanted to speak to you on a couple of major points regarding this amendment of the whole. It is an ordinance that we have worked with various community leaders to ensure that we have removed overly complicated language. It brings the graffiti ordinance in line with what the department realistically undertakes as our abatement practice. It clearly defines for the public the abatement process and definitively engages the public. This is a community problem. It requires a community solution, and we believe that this amendment as a whole encompasses that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Mike Battershell, 2325 South 32nd Avenue, President of the South Omaha Neighborhood Alliance. As Ms. Tippy Pierce had indicated, we've worked with, as part of the alliance, with Councilman Gernat, as well as Public Works, over the past few weeks to make sure this language works for neighborhoods, and we support the amendment of the whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gernat.
Thank you, Mr. President. The amendment that is in front of us today brings the work that's being done, or has been done for the last three months, to fruition. There was a loophole. We believe as a working group, as does our law department, closes that loophole, but does not create anything new as far as other loopholes that we went through example after example after example, from unintended consequences to dreaming. And we worked through all of those. One of the things that I do want to make sure that everybody understands, both here in the chamber and out in TV land, there will be no fines attached to this. That may come at a later date as we move through and see how this particular ordinance works, but there are no fines attached to this. I would just like to close in saying a huge thank you to all of the neighborhood coalitions that were at the table, some individual neighbors that took time out of their day as well to come down, the law department, Public Works, for all of their input and guidance. I'm confident that, and I would agree, that when you first read this language, it probably scared the bejeebies out of you. And it was good to have this networking to get through some of those unintended consequences. And I think that, I would say that we didn't address all of them in code, but we have assurances from the Public Works Department that they will look at the remaining unintended consequences and see where improvements to Public Works policy dealing with graffiti abatement can be changed and updated. Would that be an accurate statement, Marty?
Marty, great. Public Works. Yes, I believe so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Jaram.
Yes, I too want to thank the neighborhood associations, particularly Sona, the Neighborhood Center, MENA, but especially you, Councilmember Gernat. I know this has got to be your, one of your biggest issues you've worked on as long as I've known you. You're passionate about it, and it's all just to make sure that our city is cleaned up from this horrible stuff we all have to deal with, it seems like, and graffiti. And the sooner people can learn that it's vandalism and it's not hard to deface other people's property without their permission, the better off we'll all be. And you worked very hard on that, so I think, you know, you should be commended for your efforts. But what was key here for me is the recognition in this amendment of the whole, and what this will do is, we won't be revictimizing anybody. There was a concern in my district that there were some people in areas of District Three that are subject to repeat tagging and graffiti, and they were worried that they would be singled out for fines and reimbursement bills for the cleanup efforts. And after rereading this language, getting the assurances from you and from Public Works that that not only would not happen, but cannot happen as written, that was enough to bring me aboard and to alleviate the concerns that I have. And I want to thank Mr. Battershell and his group, as well as you, for bringing this. I don't know how many layovers we had, but it seemed like a number of times that it's been before us. So I plan to support it.
Ms. Stothard.
Thank you. And just for those that are watching that perhaps have not had a chance to read the ordinance, I just wanted to ask either Councilman Gernat or Public Works if you could just briefly let people know what this means. Basically, if a private property owner has graffiti on their home or on their private property, if they can abate it, we expect them to do that, but if they cannot, the city will continue. Could you just briefly kind of give a summary, either one of you?
Absolutely. The current operation of the abatement team, our two painters, our graffiti coordinator, what they do right now, when a request comes in, a work order is written up, and an abatement ban goes out and covers it up, that will not change. That stays the same. The reason why we have this is because there are a few out there that would rather throw the abatement process onto the backs of the taxpayers, and there was nothing in ordinance to help Public Works as a last effort, this tool that we're providing, that hopefully will pass today. There is, there was nothing in the original ordinance that would give any teeth, so to speak, to Public Works to bring those folks into compliance. Do they have a list of other things that they can do before they get to this last resort? Absolutely. And that will not change. That stays the same. So, we're putting a tool into the toolbox for them to use as a last resort with the change in this ordinance, because originally, the ordinance was not working really in reality. And it just took this long to gather all of this stuff, and now is a good time to change it due to the fact that we had a consultant in, and he's recommending updates of ordinances and state statutes.
Can we also let people know if they want to report graffiti? Who did they report it to? Is it OPD? Is it Public Works? Is that clear?
We're trying to, with our education program, to make sure that they contact the mayor's hotline, 402-444-5555, to report it. That's a big portion of our game plan on the education component. Hopefully, if we ever get a 3-1-1 system in Omaha, instead of dialing 10 digits, you'll be able to dial three and report the same thing.
So just to clarify, they do not call Omaha Police Department?
We...
Yes.
They have been calling the police department, and they've been calling the mayor's office, the hotline. Our education component is trying to steer them away from those four or five outlets into one, to the hotline. That way, they have a tracking mechanism there to show what's been done, what hasn't been done, and it'll also, that'll also be improved with what we see in the future based upon our blueprint.
Have you seen any decrease in the amount of graffiti, particularly in your district, or do you see it increasing? Or do you expect it to increase now that the weather is warmer, too?
Well, we always see an increase when the weather is good or bad. But what I have seen is that we have, the number of arrests have increased, and we're putting measures in place if any of those youngsters are salvageable. We're working towards that. So it's, I think we have, it's pretty much on a even keel right now to answer your question specifically. Occasionally, we'll have a spike, and then it'll go down. But what I have seen and very pleased is that we've made a number of arrests through the police department and efforts by the general public reporting information.
Just one last question then. And in cities that have had such ordinances passed, plans similar to what we are going to be hopefully passing here today, have they seen a decrease in the graffiti when the community is really engaged like we are hoping our community will be?
Short answer, absolutely. They've seen up to anywhere from 67% to about 82% decrease in the amount of graffiti when all components of a blueprint are put into action.
Thank you.
Of course, now that I've said that, and if the bad guys are listening.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Well, I'm supportive of this today, and certainly supportive of any additional ideas we can promote to have us reach that 70, 80% decline in graffiti in our city, which would be admirable, and certainly I commend Councilman Gernat for bringing this to us. And I think this is probably the first and many new things we're considering to get that accomplished, and I'm interested in all of them. And I like the message this sends, that what we're doing is encouraging everyone to participate on the war on graffiti, and it doesn't establish any fines or liens, because that's not allowed in state law right now. And Ms. Pierce, I'd also just add that should state law change at some time in the future, it's going to be very important that Public Works establish the policies and procedures to make this workable now, and also in the future, should that state law change, and determining how we go about implementation of this in an ongoing fashion. But certainly today, this doesn't substantially change anything we're doing, other than encourage everybody to work together, and that's a worthy goal, to see reduction in graffiti across the city.
Heather Tippy Pierce, Public Works. I think that's pretty accurate. The ordinance, as amended as the amendment reads, really kind of cleans up a policy procedure, makes it very workable. It certainly doesn't close the door on any, you know, coordination with future state language, or, you know, doesn't close the door for any future councils, should it become necessary to put in enforcement action into the ordinance. But at this point, it really focuses on engagement, really puts the priority on bringing the community into the picture as a whole, you know, allowing private property owners and then engaging them as a resource for the Public Works Department to really combat this issue, because it is a citywide process, and it is a citywide problem, so therefore it should be a citywide solution.
Great. Thank you.
Last week, Mr. Gernat and myself participated in a benchmarking trip down to Kansas City, Kansas, and Kansas City, Missouri. We were looking at the 3-1-1 centers that those two cities have established, as Mr. Gernat had just mentioned there earlier. And during the presentation that we were receiving in Kansas City, Missouri, we were advised that they do not have any type of graffiti abatement program at all. And I sat there to myself, and I thought, you know, we're very, very fortunate here in Omaha to have the program that we do have established, as what was substantiated by the consulting firm that we had come from San Jose told us. But also, it's due to the efforts and the work, particularly of my colleague here on the left, Mr. Gernat, and the passion that he has had for the graffiti program. Gary was the one that was very instrumental in bringing the consulting firm here, and so, Gary, once more, your thanks for the work that you've expended in this endeavor. Mr. Jaram.
I almost forgot, and I will call down Mr. Battershell just because he was jumping out of his seat, but to underscore that, there's no cookie cutter solution, that the blueprint that Councilmember Gernat's talking about is the Omaha blueprint. It's a blueprint of input from our various constituencies and neighborhood groups, and it'll become Omaha's blueprint. So, I don't want people to think that this is just going to be top-down. It's very much has been a participatory process. Now, Mr. Battershell, did you have something you wanted to?
On this word, Mike Battershell, South Omaha Neighborhood Alliance, to Mrs. Stothard and Councilman Festerson, just so you know, as neighborhood alliances, as the Neighborhood Center goes, and we talk about how this impacts us, because to all of your points, that was our concern, what does it mean as a property owner? South Omaha Neighborhood is committed to buying graffiti kits, so I'd encourage, North Omaha Neighborhood Alliance has sat in this as well, as well as I'm sure the Northwest Neighborhood Alliance and all of those through the Neighborhood Center, we have kits available for property owners to remove graffiti, so that they don't have to buy those supplies. We buy them in bulk, they're available at no cost to neighbors through their neighborhood associations. So as long as we're televising to TV land, just have them reach out to the Neighborhood Center or to their neighborhood association, and they'll be able to get those kits at no charge in the coming months. We're working with, again, Councilman Gernat and Public Works on procuring those in a large enough supply to make it cost-effective. Thank you.
Thanks. And as Councilmember Gernat said, there are successes in this story, there are more arrests that not often get the publicity that they should get, and if anybody sees the rascals that continue to deface the Field Club Trail, let me know. I'd like to talk to them.
We need a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call.
The amendment of the whole.
I move the amendment of the whole.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Stothard. Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed six to zero. Resolutions. Item number 64, resolution at the steady area of Census Track 24 and 20, Block Group Three, with boundaries generally described as South 24th Street on the west, I-80 on the south, Martha Street at 21st Street to Castlar, and 16th Street on the north, and Riverview Road on the east, is hereby declared to meet the standards of a substandard and blighted area in need of redevelopment, and designated a community redevelopment area.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 64 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Bridget Hadley, City Planning. This is a request for a community redevelopment area designation of an area that generally comprises the Vinton Business District and several business corridors, or commercial corridors, that are based on those boundaries that are in the agenda. The purpose is to allow for future redevelopment projects to come forward and apply for tax increment financing. The City of Omaha has done a study of the general area, and has determined that the area does represent an area that is in need of redevelopment, and also that it does meet the criteria for substandard and blight, based on the Nebraska Community Development Law. In addition, the Greater Omaha Chamber of Commerce has been looking at the area in terms of how can they help revitalize the community, and they had brought it to the attention of the city, that they would love to be able to help the Vinton Business District redevelop, and that they knew that the TIF tool would be an extremely important tool to help. So, by this designation, that will allow for the future use of that tool. Again, this meets the criteria for the Nebraska Community Development Law, and I ask for your approval.
Thank you, Bridget. Are there any other proponents?
Karen Maropulos with the Greater Omaha Chamber, 1301 Hartney Street, Omaha, 68102. As Bridget was mentioning, the Community Development Division of the Omaha Chamber, it's very focused on Vinton Street as one of its main revitalization projects right now, and the designation of this area as a community redevelopment area will be, you know, will allow for the use of TIF mostly for, you know, as an incentive for redevelopment. There's many challenges in redevelopment properties in that area, just because of the cost, because of their age, and many other things, and providing this as a tool for developers, it's a great incentive to allow for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Darren Smith, ArchiCon Development, Woodbine, Iowa, 505-WALK, Woodbine, Iowa, 51579. I'm here as a proponent, both as a property owner and South Omaha, for the Exarban Beef property, 3101 South 24th Street, for which we have requested TIF, and also as part of the steering committee with the South Omaha Housing Assessment.
Thank you, sir. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gernant. Bridget, would you come back?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning.
The words "blighted" and "substandard" really stand out, but this is not a direct slam towards any individual property owner. This is, right now, that's the wording that's being used, and we're trying to get that changed through the state, correct?
Correct. We are working on that. I know that there was a bill submitted to the legislature this session. I'm not sure that it made it out of the committee, but we are still working on that.
Okay. So, to allow redevelopment to happen, we need to, you got to start somewhere, and this is the beginning.
Correct. This is the first step to use the tax increment financing tool, is that's...
I just want everybody to understand out there, as their elected representative in that particular area that we're talking about, this isn't a direct slam saying that your house is blighted and substandard. This is part of a process that needs to get started in that area, but those two terms there are kind of grab you by the chest hairs, I think, a little bit. So, we've got, but there is something working, and that's what we have to do.
Exactly.
It's just the way it is.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody gets a clear picture that we're not blaming anybody.
No, we're not blaming anyone. I know we've understood that those terms, light and substandard...
Pretty harsh.
Are harsh. They are terms, though, that are in the Nebraska Community Development Law, so we have to use them, but we also realize that we can also use the term "community redevelopment area," which by definition in the community development law says it's an area that has been designated and determined to be blighted and substandard according to the law. So, we are using that term more so, "community redevelopment area," because it is a little more palpable to people. But it is not a direct slam at any particular property owner. We look at general area conditions.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just to build upon that, too, this is really a good day for South Omaha. There's a lot of great things on the agenda here today. I know Councilman Gernant's been involved with, and this is one. And to the notion of tax increment financing districts, I'm pleased to see that being applied in this area, because it is another great example of an historic and unique business district that has great potential for the future with new business developments, and while maintaining its character and continuing to have the positive attraction that it does, and another example of adopting a tax increment financing district and the blighted and substandard label that comes with, we've done in Benson and in Dundee, and those things have provided a great opportunity for new business development there, and I know they will here, too. So, I see them as a very positive tool we can use all throughout the city. And if there's not a motion yet, I'd be happy to second one.
Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gernant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, six to zero. Item number 65, resolution that the amendment to the Broadmoor Development Company, LLC, Tax Income Financing Redeveloped Project Plan, reducing the boundaries of the planned area, as well as approving the Exarban Apartment Two, LLC, Tax Income Financing Redeveloped Project Plan located at 2121 South 64th Plaza, which proposes the construction of 148 new efficiency one- and two-bedroom market-rate apartment units with enclosed parking garages, hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 65 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning. This is an amendment to the Broadmoor Development Company, LLC. TIF originally was to completely develop the area between 63rd and 64th at Center Street. Due to the housing and market crises a few years ago, the developer determined that in order for him to move forward, he was going to make, had to make modifications in the project's scope. So, this amendment allows for a reduction of the original plan size to allow us to create a brand-new TIF of the remaining portion, and that brand-new TIF is the Exarban Apartments Two, TIF redevelopment plan, which then will bring on two new structures comprised of a total of 148 efficiency one- and two-bedroom units, market rate. It does increase the TIF by $1 million, but there is support, enough valuation to support the entire project. So, with that, I would ask for your approval. And I do know that the representative of the developer is here, if you should have any specific questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yeah, I think it's important to commend the developer, too, for sticking it out here. And although this is less dense than what we had hoped for, it still is dense, and will be a great addition to Exarban, and bringing more people to that area to sustain that mixed-use village that's, you know, just exploding in the last few years, notwithstanding the slowdown in the economic situation. So, I want to thank the Hancock's of Broadmoor Development for not walking on this one.
Need a motion. Second. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gernant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, six to zero. Item number 68, or, no, what am I? 66, ordinance on second reading, 66. Ordinance approving a redevelopment tax center financing loan agreement between the city and 1501 Jackson, LLC. The plan proposes the conversion and redevelopment of three surface parking lots in downtown Omaha into a five-story market-rate, multiple-family housing development.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 66 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, and for those who are wondering what this is, this is actually a nice project on the south side of the street, across from the current main fire station. It takes two parking lots and builds a five-story, primarily mid-rise residential, three? Three-story. I corrected, I thought it was five on the drawing. Maybe that's evolved.
It says five.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, actually takes three parking lots.
Oh, okay. So, I thought two, but there's three there. Looks like two to me. Maybe I was driving too fast, because I went west. In any event, it's a great addition to that neighborhood, and again, bringing more people to downtown and the Market West area, and so, when this comes back for a vote, I'd urge your support.
Mr. Clerk.
Item number 67, ordinance approving redevelopment tax center financing loan agreement with Park Roseland Apartments at 4932 South 24th Street, rehabbing the 17 apartment units and the underground parking structure of the historic Roseland Theater Building.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 67 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Bridget. Are there any other proponents?
Michael Follison, Central States Development, 740 South 75th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I represent Park Roseland Apartments, LLC. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 68, ordinance to review redevelopment tax center financing loan agreement with Park Roseland Apartments at 1320 South 29th Street, contemplating the complete renovation of the historic Park School apartment with 24 two-bedroom units and parking.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 68 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Again, Michael Follison, Central States Development, 740 South 75th Street. I'm here to answer any questions you might have about this project as well.
And these are existing apartments that we're redoing. Is that...
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 69, ordinance to accept the bid of Deffenbaugh Industries for portable chemical restroom service for park maintenance during the 2012 park season.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 69 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda, item number 70, shall be held on the third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7D, the public hearing on agenda, items 71 shall be held on the third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing on agenda, items 72 through 73 shall be held on the second reading.
Motion to go on in the next session to discuss the redevelopment. Second. Roll call.
Festerson is out. Gernant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes. We will now go into executive session to discuss only contract negotiations.
Yep. Careful.